Good morning. It's nine thirty and I'd like to call the Tuesday, June eleventh, two thousand and twenty four. Athabasca County Council meeting in order. The first item of business is actually just as a note to congratulate Council Chams for completing the Calgary Stair. Calgary firefighter stair challenge over the weekend. I don't have the stats, but I know it was. Hundred and twenty eight, under twenty eight minutes and thirteen hundred plus stairs in bunker gear. And some money.
No bunker gear this year.
Oh, no bunker gear this year.
Still have to wear the SCBA.
I get. There you go. Well, now you've got a challenge for next year. Item number one is the approval of the agenda. Items that I recognize as needing discussed are two point one, three point one, three point two. We need to delete five point one. The delegation has had to postpone. We have seven point one through five, so all of section seven bylaws. Eight. Point three, eight point six is deleted. Nine point one. All of section thirteen, including thirteen. Four, which would be an advice from officials. Sorry, thirteen three relates to a different advice from officials. Thirteen four is advice from officials and thirteen five would be intergovernmental relations, section twenty one. CIO, did I catch all of the things here? Those are the ones. Council Anderson.
Thank you. Can I also add six point five and eight point two, please?
Okay, six point five, eight point two. Counselor Holland, you are told me you.
Thank you. Eight point two was called four point two, please, and eleven point one G.
Eleven point one G. Counselor Mins.
K O put on. What am I looking at here? Six point one. What do we got here? Just a quick response, an eight point four.
And. Sorry, you'd like eight point four?
Yeah, eight point four, eleven point one E.
Eleven point one E and eleven point one K. Eleven point one K. Counselor. Chums.
Eleven point one T.
Eleven point one T. Counselor Wallack. Counselor Capitani. Gerlach. Counsel Crumble.
Approve as amended.
Okay, so let's go through the list and then we'll take on Counsel Crumble motion. I have on my list number two point one, three point one. Four point two. Delete five point one, six point one is on six point five. Seven, all of section seven, that's seven, one through seven, five, eight point two. Eight point three. Eight point four, delete eight point six, nine point one, and then we have eleven point one E, G, K. And T, and then section thirteen, one, two, thirteen, three is advice from officials, thirteen, four is advice from officials, and thirteen, five. Is section twenty one intergovernmental relations. Counselor Holland.
Thank you. Eight point one as well, please.
Eight point. Eight point one, everybody got that? Counsel Crummel has made a motion. To adopt the agenda as amended, is there any discussion? Seeing none on the question of the adoption of the agenda as amended, all those in favor? Opposed, the count is nine and zero and the motion is adopted. Counselor Anderson.
Thank you. Like to make a motion to recess the council meeting and proceed with the public hearing, please.
Counselor Anderson has made a motion to recess county council meeting and recess to public hearing. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those, if you're ready for the question, all those in favor? Opposed, the count is nine and zero, and the council meeting is in recess. I would like to declare the public hearing open at nine thirty four. I'm Brian Hall, Reefer us about Athabasca County, and I'll be the chair of the hearing. On behalf of council, I would like to welcome anybody who's here today or listening online. All of councils present. And given that there's no guests in the room, we will dispense with introductions. Secretary of the hearing is. Mister Bob Beck, who is CIO for the county. Any persons who have joined the meeting via Zoom and are wishing to be heard should give their name now. And there is no one joining via Zoom. The public hearing for bylaw zero eight two zero two four is now open. CIO Beck.
Thank you, Mister Chairman. The purpose of this public hearing is for Athabasca Council of the County to hear testimony from interested parties. It is not meant to be a debate between presenters and all comments must be directed to council through the chair. Only one person may speak at a time and each person wishing to provide input to council will have the opportunity to do so. The ground rules of the hearing and the order of speaking will be Director of Community Protective Services. Krista Wilkinson will speak first to outline the background, provide an explanation of the bylaw. Secondly, members of the public who are wished to be heard will be given the opportunity to speak. Director Wilkinson will be given the opportunity to present closing remarks or address any of the issues presented. Counselors will be given the opportunity to ask questions. Council will then end the public hearing and will later consider the information considered at the public hearing. Council will only consider matters raised at the hearing. Only counselors may ask questions of speakers during the hearing. If any persons want to ask questions of a speaker, they must ask the chair to ask the question on their behalf during their presentation. And the chair will only ask a question if the chair wishes to have an answer in order to undertake its consideration.
I would, before hearing from the public, I'd like to ask Director Wilkinson to provide background and explanation for the proposed bylaw.
Good morning. This is an application to amend land use bylaw. For a zoning change from heavy industrial to agriculture district in the southwest of thirty five, seventy one seventeen west of four. Parcels approximately two and a half kilometers southwest of Brainet with approximately sixty five acres cleared. And the remainder is in bush. First reading of this bylaw was approved on May fourteenth. As this parcel is vacant and the demand for industrial land is not there, the applicant would like to redistrict it back to agriculture to allow for appropriate development in the future. The parcel is currently being used as an agricultural land.
Does any, does council have any questions or points of clarification they'd like to ask the director? Seeing none, I'd like to call on persons wishing to speak. Are there any joining us via Zoom, Mister Schenkelberg? There are no people. Joining via Zoom, so. Is there anybody? Who has spoken and doesn't wish, not spoken and wishes to speak? I think we know the answer to that is no. At this time, does council have any additional questions? Of the staff? Oh, sorry, Director. I neglected to ask you if there are any written materials that have been submitted.
There is, Mister Chair.
Would you read them and place them in the record? Please.
We had a letter from Maureen Kirby. Thank you for the notice of the land use application. Had planned on attending the public hearing, but unfortunately I'm unable to do so. I'm totally in support of the amendment, changing the zoning from heavy industrial to agriculture. I realize that is necessary to have diverse land use within the county. However, I feel that agricultural lands are a finite resource and it is good to see farmland recognized and maintained as such whenever possible. So that was submitted by Maureen Kirby. We referred this application, of course, out to stakeholders. We got a response from Alberta Forestry and Parks Land Delivery. Has no objection to the attached bylaw amendment. And Apex Utilities has no objection to the proposed bylaw amendment.
Does council have any questions or points of clarification on this? Council meetings, the floor is yours.
Just a clarification, that is southwest of Wondern River. Right? Not southwest of Raina.
Let me look.
It would be southwest to Brainet.
Yeah, that's a mistake, I guess.
Perfect. Thank you. If there are no further, at this time, does council have any additional questions from any of the staff? It's a lot of time to. Get questions here. Does anyone feel they've not been fairly heard? If no, there being no further testimony, I'll close the public hearing and further advise that council cannot receive further information on this matter. Thank you for attending the hearing. I declare the public hearing closed at. Nine thirty nine AM. I would like to now open a public hearing for bylaw zero zero nine two zero two four at nine forty AM. The purpose of this hearing is identical to the last one. CIO, do we need to? Thank you.
Mister Chairman. The purpose of this public hearing is for Athabasca Council of the County to hear testimony from interested parties. It is not meant to be a debate between presenters and all comments must be directed to council through the chairperson. Only one person may speak at a time and each person wishing to provide input to council will have the opportunity to do so. Ground rules of the hearing and the order of speaking will be Director of Community Protective Services Krista Wilkinson will speak first. To outline the background, provide an explanation of the bylaw. Members of the public who are wishing to be heard will be given the opportunity to speak. Director Wilkinson will be given the opportunity to present closing remarks. Or address any of the issues presented. Counselors will be given the opportunity to ask questions. Council will then end the public hearing, will later consider the information received at the public hearing. Council will only consider matters raised at hearing. Only counselors may ask questions of speakers during the hearing. If any persons want to ask questions of a speaker, they must ask the chair to ask the question on their behalf during their presentation. And the chair will only ask a question if the chair wishes to have an answer in order to undertake its consideration.
It's kind of like getting on an airplane. Even though you've got it memorized, you gotta hear it again. Before hearing from the public, I'd like to ask Director Wilkinson to provide some background information on the proposed bylaw.
So this is, this parcel is adjacent to the previous one. It's an application to amend land use bylaw. From heavy industrial to agriculture district on the west southeast of thirty five, seventy one seventeen west of four. Parcel is approximately two kilometers southwest of Wondern River. And approximately twenty five acres are cleared and the remainder is bush. First reading of this bylaw is approved on May fourteenth. As this parcel is vacant and the demand for industrial land is not there, the applicant would like to redistrict it back to agriculture. To allow for appropriate development in the future and the parcel is being, currently being used as agricultural land.
Does council have any questions or points of clarification on that information? Seeing none, Director Wilkinson, are there any material, written materials that have been submitted?
Yes, I have a few here. This, of course, was referred out to. Agencies, Alberta Forestry and Parks Land Delivery has no objection to the bylaw amendment. Apex Utilities has no objection to the bylaw amendment. And we got a response, Infrastructure Services at Athabasca County has no concerns with the subject land and the bylaw amendment.
I would now call upon persons wishing to speak. Mister Schenkelberg, are there anybody, is there anybody joining us? There is not. Does council have any questions or points of clarification? Seeing none at this time, there's one more call for questions or points of clarification from staff or any of the materials. There being no further testimony, I'd like to close the public hearing and further advise that council cannot receive any further information on this matter. The public hearing be closed at nine forty three AM. Thank you for attending. It would be in order to re. We reopen, like to reconvene the Athabasca County meeting. Council meeting of June eleventh. The next item of business on our agenda is item four point two. Counselor Holland, you. Made note that there was a correction.
Thank you. Yes, on page eleven of our agenda, resolution CC two four two three nine. According to the administrative report in our May thirtieth agenda, the motion should be to receive. As per the recommendation in the agenda, not accept.
So to change the, the.
The word except.
The word except to receive.
Yes, please. Thank you.
Is there someone willing to move a motion to adopt the minutes as amended? Counselor Mins. Counselor Mins has made a motion to adopt the minutes as amended. Is there any further discussion on that item? Seeing none on the question of the adoption of the minutes, all those in favor? Opposed, the count is nine and zero and then. Motion is adopted. We are at six point one. Counselor Mins, are you prepared to move a motion?
You betcha. I'll do, I'll, I'll move the recommended motion to rescind the policy ten seventy five.
Counselor Mins has made a motion to rescind policy ten seventy five? The floor is yours.
I guess I just wanted to commend administration. County Council. All of us for starting on this, this strategic goal plan that, that we had to make at the basket count of one of the. One of the employers of choice or, and this is, this is a very good start by rescinding some of these policies and, and. Over overarching, overreaching policies like this is, is a, is a great move forward. So I just wanted to. To give my. Thank you to everybody for starting this and getting it rolling.
Is there any further discussion on that motion? Seeing none on the question of the adoption of the motion to rescind policy one zero eight five managers' meetings, all those in favor? Opposed, the count is nine and zero and the motion is adopted. Six point five, Counsel Anderson, are you prepared to move?
Like to move to refer this item to administration for their input and recommendation.
Counselor Anderson has made a motion to refer this item to administration for their input and recommendation. Is there any discussion? Counselor Holland.
Thank you. Just so that everyone is aware, every municipality that is named in this particular document has had administrative input and clarification. So I'm not quite sure. What would be asked for at this time? We could get clarity on what is being asked for at this time.
Other discussion? I'm sorry, I shut my microphone off. I had some questions when I read the recommendation and so I support the referral to administration because I'm not clear. With your wrath about, it says that the county is registered as owner of the trail system, but I'm not clear that the county actually owns all the land. And I think there's some other comments that. That relate to the November thirtieth meeting that while we, there may have been some requests, there wasn't necessarily motions to support it. So I'd. I'd like to, I'm uncomfortable supporting. Anything except without seeing an analysis from administration on their, their view on that memorandum and seeing their recommendation. Other comments? CIO, do you want to speak?
Yeah, Miss Chairman. I can give you our analysis right now. All the other municipalities have approved it. We did make suggestions to. Language earlier in the process, and I believe I even tried to get some input from council at some time ago. So a lot of the wordsmithing has been done by Sturgeon County, thanks to them and their CIO, and I. All I can offer is I supported those amendments. It's important for council to remember, this is a non-binding agreement. It's more of a. Let's call it what it is. It's a political handshake between municipalities to say that the trail system is important. If there are. Issues regarding the RFD about language in the RFD, that's separate from the MOU, I think. So. If you refer the MOU to us for more analysis, we're going to recommend you just adopt it because all the other ones have adopted it.
Okay, other comments? You've already spoken, so I'm going to leave that. Is there any? Are you ready for the question or do you want to go around a second time? Let's, Counsel Wallack.
My guess is to administration and some of the MOU, there's some demands. Ish things of reviewing things. How much administration time is this going to take?
Mister Chairman, I think this is a fair question and it came up during strat priorities, not trails specifically. But, and I've expressed this to Counsel Holland as recently as yesterday. Council needs to have a robust discussion about the level of service that this council is committed to the trail endeavor. Because there could be lots, but it's important to remember that this is non-binding. So it's also important to remember, council gets to set the level of service for how it, how far it wants to support the trail endeavor within its boundaries. And council has not given us direction to that. You've made a few motions. Do this thing, do that thing, apply for a grant, but you still need a good discussion about how far we're going and. Like I say, Counsel Holland and I had a good discussion about that yesterday, that that's outstanding. This does not mean we're starting a trail division in the, in the county next year.
Counsel Holland, are you okay with leaving it one circle?
I would like to add a few words if that may be.
Is there any objection at the table to a second circle? Seeing none, Counsel Holland, the floor is yours.
Thank you. As it was mentioned with regards to the RFD, there, these are factual items that have been provided to us and we can pull those. From our records, the Trans Canada Trail registered as Athabasca County as owner, yes. But it also mentions that what the trail is made up of, which includes private land, it includes undeveloped road allowances, it includes several different factions. As we know, right now, currently there's might be fifty six kilometers, but we might have eleven kilometers that are in the wilderness. Per se of the trail, the rest is basically maintained on the roads as it is. So this memorandum of understanding is the very beginning, even though it was meant for not an official motion, it was very clear. On November thirtieth, what was requested of the Athabasca Landing Trail Steering Committee. And being that the Athabasca Landing Trail Steering Committee is just that, they are a steering committee, the master plan that was adopted mentions all of these agreements that are required, et cetera, and. Every other municipality is very happy to go forward with this. So if there's any concerns or any other questions, I would be happy to answer them. But again, this is a situation as a first step. It is, doesn't tie the county into any. Level of maintenance, doesn't tie the county into any level of development. It is simply to acknowledge that we have this trail in our area as we were asked to acknowledge rather than having the handshake. And that the rest of the communities and the that belong on the earth that actually. Have this trailing this jurisdiction, want to know that everybody is on the same page, that there's in their jurisdiction to do what they can, when they can, with their budget. So it's, I think it's an excellent start and making sure that we have everything on paper as we have been trying to eliminate the handshake discussions. And put them into more of a formal agreement.
For the comments? Seeing none, if you're ready. Counselor Anderson is mover the motion. You want final word?
We previously discussed a desire for a more in-depth conversation around our strategic priorities and our level of service when it comes to trails. And I just really feel like this RFD and the recommendation. Is an individual counselor trying to push this item along. Prior to us really having that.
Point of order.
Discussion.
Point of order.
And we also discussed. During our strategic priority setting, wanting to pursue. Formal agreements. So I, I do agree that this fits in with that, but I thought that administration was supposed to be coming back to us with. A list of which agreements were their top priority and where we really needed to start focusing and so on. I just think that we need to have a little bit more input from administration prior to. Pushing things along. In this manner.
Thank you. Counsel Holland, you made a point of order. Can you state the point of the? Place in the bylaw that we've departed, the council has departed?
Yes, it is an insult to accuse.
Which part of the bylaw?
I'm sorry, I don't have the bylaw in front of me, so I will just explain because we need to be respectful of that bylaw. I will explain that one counselor is not trying to push the agenda when we have five municipalities that actually work together on this. So I take very offense to that. That is.
I'm, I think that's a different relationship and that point is not well taken. On the question of the adoption of the motion. To refer this to administration for their recommendation and input, all those in favor? Opposed? The count is. Three and six, the motion is defeated. Is there someone willing to move a motion? Right here, Counsel Crummel. I'd like to move that Athabasca County Council approved the.
I'd like to move that Athabasca County Council approved the Athabasca Landing Trail Intermunicipal Memorandum of Understanding as presented and directed. C E O Beck to execute it on the behalf of the council.
Councillor Cromwell has moved that the county approved the tri- landing trail intermunicipal intermunicipal memorandum of understanding as presented and direct the C A O to execute it on behalf of council. Discussion on that motion. Sir, need? Councillor Mins, the floor is yours.
I guess, uh, if I could uh, look at this. We're actually, we got, we got a response from administration that said that they were just going to take it, the M O U and bring it right back at the next meeting. So that's why we should just approve it. So that's my thoughts.
Further discussion? Councillor Cromwell, does a mover? Do you want a final word? On the question of the adoption of the motion that the county, Athabasca County Council approved, the Athabasca Landing Trail Intermunicipal Memorandum of Understanding as presented and direct C E O Beck to execute it on behalf of council, all those in favor? Opposed? Count is seven and two, the motion is adopted. We are at item number seven point one. Is there someone willing to move the recommended motion? Councillor Chamsik? Councillor Chamsik has moved that we give first reading to bylaw zero one two two zero two four, a land use bylaw amendment for a portion of lot one, block one, plan one four two two six six one within the northeast thirteen seventy one seventeen, west of the four from agriculture district to light industrial district and to direct administration to schedule and advertise a public hearing on July twenty fifth at nine thirty A M for bylaw zero one two two zero two four. Any discussion on that? Seeing none on the question of the adoption of that motion, all those in favor? Opposed, the count is nine and zero and the motion is adopted. Item number seven point two. Is a bylaw regarding lot consolidation? Is someone willing to move first reading of bylaw zero one three two zero two four? Councillor, no, it's councillor Gerlick. Has moved first reading of zero one three two zero two four. Well, you're all the kind of, um, this is a bylaw, uh, to cancel part of the subdivision plan number seven seven two one zero four zero and consolidate lots. Is there any discussion on this matter? On the, if you're ready for the question, on the question, the adoption of first reading of bylaw zero one three two zero two four, all those in favor? Opposed, the count is nine and zero and first reading is adopted. Councillor Kapitanic, did you want to move second reading? Councillor Kapitanic has moved second reading of bylaw zero one three two zero two four. A lot consolidation for lot seven and eight, block one, plan seven seven two one zero four zero. Is there any discussion on that motion? Seeing none on the question of the adoption of the motion, all those in favor? Opposed, the count is nine and zero and the motion is adopted. Someone willing to move for unanimous consent to do three readings in one meeting? Councillor Cromwell has proposed that there's unanimous consent for three readings. Uh, that's non-debatable, all those in favor? That is opposed, so it's nine and zero and consent is unanimous. Is someone willing to move a third reading? Councillor Chamsik has moved third reading of bylaw zero one three two zero two four, lot consolidation of lots, lots seven and eight, block one, plan seven seven two one zero four zero. Any discussion on that motion? All those in favor? Opposed, the count is nine and zero and the motion is adopted. We have, uh, item seven point three. Is a bylaw proposing lot, uh, bylaw zero one four two zero two four, proposing lot consolidation of lots eighteen, nineteen and twenty of block three, plan one five two two M C. Councillor Wallack would like to move first reading of that bylaw. Is there any discussion? Seeing none? On the question of the adoption of the motion to move first reading of bylaw zero one four two zero two four, all those in favor? Opposed, the count is nine and zero and the motion is adopted. Is there anyone willing to move second reading? Councillor Mins has moved second reading of bylaw zero one four two zero two four, lot consolidation of lots eighteen, nineteen and twenty of block three, plan one five two two M C. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, if you're ready for the question, it is on the adoption of the of second reading of bylaw zero one four two zero two four, all those in favor? Opposed, the count is nine and zero and the motion is adopted. Councillor Anderson, do you want to move for unanimous, seek unanimous consent? Someone willing to, councillor Anderson is proposing a motion to seek unanimous consent to move to third reading. Is there all those in favor? Opposed, the count is nine and zero, there is unanimous consent to to seek third reading. Who hasn't moved a motion, councillor Holland? Is someone willing to move third reading of bylaw zero one four two zero two four, councillor Holland? Has moved on the question of the adoption of the motion to approve third and final reading of bylaw zero one four two zero two four, all those in favor? Opposed, the count is nine and zero and third reading, the motion on third reading is adopted. Are we going too fast? Okay, this one relates to a public hearing. This is, uh, is there anyone willing to move second reading of bylaw zero zero eight two zero two four? Councillor Cromwell? Councillor Cromwell has moved second reading of bylaw zero zero eight two zero two four, a land use bylaw amendment for the southwest thirty five seventy one seventeen four from heavy industrial or M two to agriculture or A district. Is there any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, if you're ready for the question, it is on the adoption of the motion to move second reading of bylaw zero zero eight two zero two four, all those in favor? Opposed, the count is nine and zero and second reading, motion on second reading is adopted. Is there someone willing to move third reading? Councillor, uh, Mins has moved third reading of bylaw zero zero eight two zero two four. Is there any discussion on that matter? Seeing done on the question of the adoption of third reading of zero zero eight two zero two four, all those in favor? Opposed, the count is nine and zero and the motion is adopted. Item number seven point five on page seventy one of your agenda is a land use bylaw amendment regarding zero zero nine two zero two four, our second hearing of this morning. Someone willing to move first, second reading, councillor, uh, Chamsik? Has moved second reading of zero zero nine two zero two four, a land use bylaw amendment for the west half of the southeast thirty five seventy one seventeen four from heavy industrial to agricultural. Any discussion on that matter? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed, the count is nine and zero and second reading, motion on second reading is adopted. Councillor Wallack moved third reading. Third and final reading of bylaw zero zero nine two zero two four. The land use bylaw amendment for the west southeast thirty five seventy one seventeen four from heavy industrial to agricultural. Is there any discussion on that matter? Seeing none, the question is on the adoption of that motion, all those in favor? Opposed, the count is nine and zero and the motion is adopted. We are moving on to page eighty one of the agenda. That's item number eight point one, councillor Holland. You asked for this to be on the agenda. Are you willing to move a motion?
Yes, uh, instead of the recommended motion, just a slight change that council receive the citizen budget communications plan as information.
Councillor Holland has moved that council receive the citizen budget communication plan as information. Is there any discussion on that matter? Seeing none, the question is on the adoption of the motion to receive the citizen budget communication plan as information, all those in favor? Opposed, the count is nine and zero and the motion is adopted. Number eight point two, councillor Anderson, are you prepared to make a motion?
Move to appoint councillor Wallack as the voting member for the multiplex society A G M scheduled on July fifteenth.
Councillor Anderson has moved to appoint councillor Wallack as the
Sorry, I'll be away that day, so, sorry.
I haven't read it, so do you want to?
Sorry, that was councillor Kapitani. Misread my notes.
Councillor Anderson has made a motion to appoint councillor Kapitanic as the voting member for the multiplex society A G M scheduled on July fifteenth two zero two four. Is there any discussion on that matter, councillor Mins?
So, is this in the terms of reference?
Certainly in the society bylaw.
Oh, okay.
So in the, just as a background, in the society bylaw, there are two members. One is the town of Athabasca, one is the county. And then you go to the A G M and the county gets to vote and the town gets to vote, not the board members, because the board members are, it's a different structure. So the, so you're required to appoint a member to from, to, to represent the county's voice.
Okey dokey.
It's a, yeah, well, yeah, except the first year, which might not be.
Like, we, but we, we go to many A G Ms and, and, and the board votes on A G M stuff.
This is the way the society bylaws are. I, I'm going to say I've read them and I'm not really the quality of the bylaws is a subject for a different discussion. Councillor Anderson has made a motion to council appoint councillor Kapitanic as the voting member, councillor Gerlick. So there are a total of two votes? Yep. So if there's a tie, it doesn't, you know. Is there any, is there discussion? On, if you're ready for the question, the question is on the adoption of the motion to appoint councillor Kapitanic as the voting member for Athabasca County at the Athabasca Regional Multiplex Society A G M scheduled for July fifteenth. All those in favor? Opposed, the count is nine and zero and that motion is adopted. Normally by this point in the agenda, we'd schedule a break, but you guys are cranking it on so fast that we'll keep going. The next item is eight point three, C A O, um, did you have a comment that you wanted to make about, uh? In our previous discussion, you indicated you'd like to make a comment on this item. This is, uh,
Yes, Mister Chairman, um, whether it be this or any other fundraising event that you're asked to attend, I, I've only been here a short time, but, um, it's my observation, council is ultra-conservative about allowing members to attend and maybe you should really loosen up a little bit so that, uh, councillors are, for example, uh, let's pick a different item, but say there's, uh, an egg society event in your division, um, and it's a fundraising dinner for something, um. I think residents, this is my opinion, expect a local elected official to attend. And if you could do it on your own expense, that's fair. But it's also not uncommon for the county to pay for those things. So, um, in my experience, this is not unusual for a uh, so if there's a fundraising dinner next week in, in Athabasca and two of you wanted to attend, um, as a member of council, you use part of your budget and you go, part of your attendance budget. So we might need to work on some policy amendments, but what I'm, I'm just trying to emphasize, emphasize that this council seems to be pretty conservative and yet I think that residents actually like to see their local elected officials at fundraising events and, and in fact, wearing the county logo.
Okay, so there isn't a clear recommendation here. Um, is there any objection to opening the floor for just a general discussion before a motion comes forward? Seeing no objections, councillor Cromwell, you did have your hand up. Do you want to speak?
Well, I just want to make sure that our friend from the media got the part where the C E O said we were conservative in our spending and that was the highlight of her article.
I think it's a headline, actually. Front page. Councillor Holland.
Thank you, um, as I, I agree with what the C E O has said. I mean, I have had to the last few years purchase my very own farm women's ticket to attend, you know, so there's, we don't even look after those types of things. Um, when we're looking at the different options that we have here, um, I guess it's determined on who can golf and who cannot, um. I'm not a golfer, so, uh, unfortunately I try and it just doesn't work well for me, um. I guess it's a debating, you know, do we want to do the complete golf package or are we looking to sponsor, um, with maybe uh, some in attendance for the dinner? I'm, I'm not sure where the, where the appetite is.
Okay, councillor Kapitanic, you had your hand up.
I just wanted to reply to councillor Holland. I, I don't think at fundraisers skill is required. One can always drive the cart.
I'm, I appreciate the advice of the C A O in terms of having a good understanding of what, or a better understanding rather of what might be common, uh, and, and perception in the region and what other, other municipalities do and it, it can sometimes, um, be conspicuous when you're not at some of these events, uh, and, and reflect on the county. As it relates to this particular event, I would, I would lean more to, um, if someone wants to go being open to them using their budget that's already allocated to them, uh, or con- for attending events, um, to go versus, um, doing a, a big sponsorship. A package, but this is road to hope and, uh, isn't it? Oh no, this is Regional Health Foundation, sorry. I, I had two from Lacklavish County and, and, uh, one of them was road to hope. So that, sorry, that's my thought, um, anyone else want to share an idea? Councillor Cromwell, your hands on the button. You have a motion you want to make? Does anybody else have a discussion, a comment you want to make? Councillor Wallack, the floor is yours.
Um, well, I think we all know the importance of having a good, um, healthcare system in our communities and lots of people go to Lacklavish to use the healthcare system there, so, um, I propose, propose a foursome to go at fourteen hundred dollars.
You want to form a motion? Councillor Wallack has made a motion that the Athabasca County send a foursome to this event. Would, uh, from a enactment point of view offered to councillors and offered to the C A O and his staff? Okay. So, um, councillor Wallack has moved a motion to propose that the county send a foursome to this event uh, filled by councillors and or the C A O and his staff? Is there any discussion on that motion? Councillor Cromwell, floor is yours.
Councillor Wallack had some great comments that were very similar to what I was going to say and her, uh, motion's actually a little bit more generous than mine, so I applaud it and thank you for putting it on the floor.
Further discussion? Councillor Mins?
Could we, you know, okay, so, so for next year, uh, could we get this red flagged or something like that? So it comes up actually before April? Uh, or at the beginning of April and then maybe yeah, this, you know, if we're going to start start doing, attending some of these things, maybe bringing up earlier so we could save a little bit of money. If we're going to send it for people anyway.
Mister Chairman, we could start, um, documenting a bit of a calendar of events through the year that come through. So maybe we could go back a little ways so that we know in October, typically councils invited to this one and if that's what councillor Mins is, uh, asking, I think that makes most sense for council to know.
Yes, thank you. And councillor Mins, for clarity, I, I'm not sure what date I actually got this email, but I also, um, I'd had a, another one that had come and because of our history of just outright rejecting it, I, I just responded and said I you know, oh, unavailable to attend.
Yeah, and I totally.
And then I thought, well, I should put this down in, in front, uh, for us to have a better discussion. Councillor Holland, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Do we need a motion for the calendar of events being that, you know, we have these discussions, but as you mentioned earlier, it wasn't a direct motion, so maybe we should be making sure these things are looked at.
Well, and I think the C A O is certainly capable of, in my opinion, making decisions within the organization about what he keeps track of and what he doesn't.
Hmm, I see.
The motion on the floor is that the county send a foursome registrants and a foursome to this event filled with council members and or the C A O and his staff. There's no further discussion on the question of the adoption of that motion, all those in favor? Opposed, the count is eight and one, the motion is adopted. Councillor Mins, you asked to put eight point four on the agenda. Did you want to move a motion? That's the L A R V, no, yeah, L A R V decision?
Yeah, I'll just move the recommended motion, county council received the report for information. I, I, the reason I, I put this on, uh, I, I, the reason I, I put this on, uh, on the agenda is just to, to, uh. Uh, I guess. Commend. The, the, uh, Counselor Anderson for that motion of actually putting this on, on councils, uh, in, in council's agenda. Uh, that's information that a lot of people would have never seen. And I think this is a big. Uh. A great celebration when I see, uh, uh. The verdict or the, the. Thing goes out, yeah, decision, there we are, go to Athabasca County, I, I think it's, uh. And, and, and promote it through the agenda is, is great, because a lot of people would not see that. So, so thank you very much.
Counselor Minz has moved that council receive the report for information. Is there any further discussion? I, I'm glad that these are on the agenda as well to speak to this, because I think otherwise, things like this that are significant just slide through without, um. Any notice or attention from. Uh, you know, from the media and, and they, the. The impacts of decisions like this, when they're unfavorable to the county are significant. And it reinforces the, uh, decision of council. To, to hire legal representation for the SDAB and the Assessment Review Board when, when those folks meet, to make sure that the. There's clarity around the decision that's in front of them as they're making it, because this having to go through the court of King's bench. Certainly cost us far more than it needed to have if there had been. I think, uh, different, different decisions at the beginning. Is there any further discussion? On the question to, if you're ready for the question, the question is on the adoption of the motion that county council receive the report for information, all those in favor? Opposed? The count is nine and zero and the motion is adopted. Let's do calendars and then, uh. Those are under pa, on page one hundred and thirteen. Um, let's start with Counselor Cromwell and we'll work our way around.
Thank you very much. Uh, well, I guess we should add July fourth for the. Uh, charity golf on our calendars on Thursday. And then, as brought up previously, I would like to move the June twenty fifth MPC meeting. To the morning of June twenty seventh.
Uh, how does the chair feel about that? And this is CIO, have you? Checked with the. Director of. On the appropriateness of moving that meeting?
Um, Mr. Chairman, uh. I did. And now I can't remember what the response was, so, um, if you'll, uh, bear with me, I'll, uh, check with her right now, I'll be right back.
Or we can send her in.
It's fine.
Fine to move, there you go, that was fast, you hardly even, we didn't even notice you were gone. So, proposal is to move the MPC meeting to nine twenty five on. On Thursday, June twenty seventh, I think, I mean, as much as that sounds funny, let's avoid the situation where we're sitting for half an hour after MPC and council's not done. So we'll be late starting council for nine thirty, but we'll do MPC at nine twenty five if you're okay with that. Counselor Anderson, can you get here quickly enough? Uh, Counselor Cromwell, did you have more to add? Counselor Gerlick. Nothing? Nothing. Counselor Kapitanic. With your microphone. No changes? Counselor Anderson?
I have no changes. But I did want to say that, uh, council acts through. And provides direction through motions, I would have supported Counselor Holland making a motion. To direct administration to compile a calendar or list for community events, rather than just.
The CIO?
Providing direction.
Well, let's, um. We'll look at how that can come back. Calendars. I have nothing to add to the, uh, to the June calendar, I think we went over it fairly thoroughly. Last time, Counselor Wallack.
A red meeting July, uh, eighteenth at nine thirty.
A red July eighteenth at nine thirty. Counselor Chamsik.
Uh, just a correction for July eighth, uh, FCSS meeting, our next meeting will not be until September ninth. And I was just wondering if we should also put the fly-in barbecue for the. Fifth as well on the calendar.
Is it the, I hope it's not the fifth, sixth?
Oh, it's the sixth, I apologize. I think I need more coffee. I might need those too.
Counselor Holland, the floor is yours.
Thank you, June fifteenth, the, uh, upcoming Trans Canada Trail cleanup, uh, Perry Vale and Rochester area, we may be rained out being that there's. Rain sensitive activities that, uh, will, uh, require, there may be, um, a postponement to that, and if so, it would happen to be June twenty ninth. Um, if we have to postpone due to rain.
You must have a very accurate weather forecaster, because that's a long ways. Counselor Minz.
I hope that they're wrong. Uh, the only one would be, uh, June twenty sixth, possibly myself and Reeve Hall. With the commission, uh, manager, CIO going to MD of opportunity to. To discuss, um. Promoting the commission, the regional, husband regional water commission, so. That's the only other one that I have.
Yeah, there is, um. Water Commission has a scheduled delegation. To the MD on that day. That's everybody, is anything else we've missed at the table? Seeing none, is there someone willing to move the calendars as amended? Counselor Kapitanic? Has moved, we, that council adopt the calendars as amended? All those in favor? Opposed? The count is nine and zero and calendars are. Adopted. Counselor Anderson pointed out that I didn't give enough of a breath at the end of, uh. Item number eight point three for a second motion that she would like to make, so with your. If there's no objection, we'll reopen that for her comment.
Thank you, I'd like to make a motion to direct administration to begin to compile a calendar of li, or list. Of community events that council may want to consider attending for future.
Get it written down? I just brought it in. Counselor Anderson has made. A, uh, direction to, a motion to direct administration to com, begin compiling a calendar or a list of community events that council may want to consider attending? Is there any further discussion? Seeing none on the question of the adoption of that motion, all those in favor? Opposed? The count is nine and zero and the motion is adopted. We still have a little bit of time, um, with the reports, there's only four of them. I'm. Yes, absolutely.
Uh, this is in regards to our last motion, uh, would, uh, through the chair, would, uh, administration be open to counselors? Pointing out events in their districts that are of tradition and longstanding?
Yes, he would.
Mr. Chair, we would appreciate that.
So if you know of an event coming in your neighborhood, like the chicken dinner in September. Don't hesitate to fire an email to the right person and. Um, if, uh. Do we need a break?
Can I just request, uh, we skipped over the helipad today? But what I was gonna ask for is if we could get the, uh. Kind of a report from Westlock as to how much their helipad costs.
So this isn't an agenda item, Counselor Gerlick, so. Can, can we take a break and talk and come back to it?
Well, it's just a request to. Get some information.
You're adding an item on the floor that hasn't been approved with the approval of the agent. And we've not typically done that, and so I'm gonna say. Let's talk about that.
Okay, so my feelings are hurt and.
There's two options, we have reports which can be quick. And then we take a break, or we can take a break and come back and do reports and go into closed, what do you want?
Like to reconvene the June eleventh Athabasca County Council meeting. We are at number eleven point one E, Councilor Minz, you wanted to provide an update.
Yeah, we had a water commission meeting in April, it was, it was June fourth. At the town, town of Athabasca office and it was a good meeting. Went through a couple of reports from the commission manager reports. And then went into the. Financials are good, there's a bit of a change from, from the reporting part of it. One, one part of it is, is like it was done at the end of them and the beginning of the month and the other part is. Receivables and, and, and. Council payables, we've done it two different times, so we've got it. Through, through Board Director Hall, we got it figured out where it's going to actually match. It would just be a, maybe you can chime in.
Yeah, so we're gonna, just the way the report came to the board, we're gonna, we're asked now for the last complete month, month done. So that revenues and expenses are fully in, so we received a report that was done to May twenty ninth. At which point most of May's expenses were in, but because revenue is recognized when. When you bill it and they hadn't done many's billing yet, you have maze. The, the revenue reported as of May twenty ninth did not include May revenue because it wasn't yet billed. But included all of the expenses, so it tends to distort the performance of the organization. And so. Those are still going to come kind of with the caveat that here's where at month to date, the board is able to see what, what the expense situation is and how that relates to budget. But we're also just going to get the last complete month in so that there's a proper matching of revenues and expenses. And on an annual basis, it's irrelevant, but monthly it's just nice to.
Yeah, it just.
You don't want to see thirty three percent of revenue and forty four percent of expenses when really there's just unaccounted for revenue or unbilled revenue.
You betcha. And the, what is it, the. Brought up a new part of the budget or new part of the agenda as a task list, list of, of where. Kind of like our motion, motionless and, and, and it, and it's really good to see that come forward. Just as we're asking for making motions in there to, to get stuff done, like the progress, progress on the. Oh, on the asset. For, for the commission to take over the Athabasca County's water services, it's, it's ongoing and where it's at and, and. Even on a motion of, of the Cornwall reservoir, find, trying to find out what the capital budget is for that. That's, that's ongoing. They haven't received a response from the town and. And then a, an agreement, a lease agreement discussions with the town of Athabasca and the raw water pump house. There was, there was a quick response on that, that, that lease agreement is a ninety nine year lease at a dollar a year. And we were told that they were paid, they paid ninety nine dollars and they're paying full. So, so we are going to have actually a better look at the lease agreement just to bring us up to speed on that. Ongoing, it's with the lawyers right now with the asset transfer. Of from county to commission for our water services there, that's what the lawyers getting the agreement built there. Can't wait to see that, I'm looking very forward. And. Also that came up in there was a request for decisions, which was. Brought forward just so, just so board members could actually bring up ideas to talk about and, and that's a new thing. And so we discussed a little bit of, instead of request for decisions, the wording of that of, you know. And we find out information can be.
Request for discussion.
Discussion, so, so that, that went very good. And there was two actually put in there from Member Hall. One of them was to reach out to Thorhill County regarding the water for life grant they got and how we could. As a commission, how we could maybe. Forward this on, help them forward it on, so, so, you know. It's in our best interest to start get more water being sold out there so it can be advantageous for all of us. As a region to, to pay less for water. And so if we could help them along, so we, we've requested hopefully a, a meeting with them to. Support them with hopefully either another water for life grant or, I don't know, come up with some ideas, get, get going out there. And then the other one was with MD of Opportunity. Going to which, which we discussed in the calendars thing, but. Going to the MD and, and selling our wares with them, how we could help them, how, how we could work together as a region and. And, you know, hopefully get a water line going that way and, and help them out, so. We'll be going there on, it sounded like the twenty sixth, there'll be a few of us going that way to meet up with them, which was. Which I'm over the moon on because we've been, I've been discussing that with them for, for many months, if not. A full year of trying to move that forward and, and yeah, and it was. So that's on the move and, and it was a great meeting.
I think you covered it, I mean, really, the commission's goal is, is, you know, to increase water sales and. Starting discussions around potential partnerships is important, I mean, those kind of relationships can take. Years to bear fruit if at all, but if I know with certainty, if you don't have a discussion that nothing's going to happen, so. We'll see where this goes and what the potential is and what the commission can, can do, but I think that's good news because it like. Councilor Minz said it has the opportunity to reduce costs and. The action item list, I'm, I know, I think that might have been our colleagues' influence with the, with the board there and it. It's a, in my opinion, it's a, another one of the things we regularly talk about here is that positive. Improvement to governance and an increase in transparency and accountability, and I think some of that is related to the influence from, from the Athabasca County, so. Something everybody should. Take pride in. Questions for Councilor Minz only? Also, girl.
Where are we at with the waterline proposal to, to the west?
Nothing as of yet, we may be talking about this later, no news.
No news?
Other questions?
Yeah, and then we also were going to look at a proposal possibly going south.
There's, there was a, so the, on, on that, there is three grant applications went in, one. To do some early phases of the westbound line. And then two for feasibility studies, one going south and one going east. And we are not in a position to have those yet. That's Holland, you're.
Thank you.
Are you moving on to, you know, the point one E or G?
G.
Hey, is there any more questions for Councilor Minz?
You don't have a question, Phil?
Councilor Holland, the floor is yours on the Trail Steering Committee.
Thank you, yes, the Athas Line Trail Steering Committee was present and active June first for the cleanup between Collington and Menook. It was a well-attended event, we had seventeen people sign up, there were sixteen that arrived. And so it's a great difference from the first year, we had three, second year we had nine, and this year we had seventeen sign up. Which is absolutely fantastic, there are many trail users there, as well as interested parties that came out. We ended up taking three times the amount of compost to the compost rather than to the garbage, which I thought was fabulous. There was four bags of, of garbage and the compost took about at least twelve bags of compost and a whole pile. In a puck, pickup of branches and whatnot that were cleaned up. Other activities included upgrading, not upgrading, but updating the. Wood preserving on the kiosks, the cleaning of the kiosks, the community was well mowed, well whippersnapped. And, and at the same time, it was really great to see the Tuatna Watershed Group were also there. That came out and they were pulling invasive species around the Tuatna Wilfong Bridge and planting native species in its place. So I thought it was absolutely amazing, so there were several committee members that came out and thank you to all the volunteers. That came as well, it was a well done, seventy four hours was clocked that day for the trail. There was great interest in the trail, including the walkie talkie group, as well as others who are planning to walk from Athabasca through to Edmonton, Fort Saskatchewan, pardon me. There's also just an uptick on Facebook with regards to a cycling group, an Alberta cycling group that are planning to do. The Athabasca Landing Trail every year, they plan on doing a ride and I think that that's amazing and they are generating a great deal of interest as well. And so the more that come out and keep the areas that the people need in the wilderness trail, portion of the trail cleaned up is, is just excellent, so. Thanks everyone and I look forward to another really good successful cleanup that's coming up soon.
Thank you, any questions for Councilor Holland? Next on the list, Councilor Minz, Athabasca Watershed Council.
Yeah, and had a AGM and board meeting on last Saturday up in Fort McMurray. I attended that. And there was probably about, I don't know, I think there was about twenty of us there, twenty people and. The. Aspen Regional Manager, Commission Manager went up there with, with myself, he wanted to. Get into a little bit more of the watershed council stuff and understand what's going on there, he loves the river, so. So we had a great drive up there, gas is cheaper up in Fort McMurray than it is in Athabasca. Yeah, figure that one out, but I guess they kind of make it there in a way. So, but the meeting, meeting was very good, the AGM first went along there and, and. Just mainly reviewed what was going on in the watershed itself, they have some terrific employees, great employees there. I think there's six full time and a couple of summer people. Students, university students actually doing their practicum through, through them and. They discuss the, the. Tuatna watershed and actually the trails, trails came up in there about how it's great to work with them, with the trails people, not. And. And then also the Pembina River. Study is going on there, and they're looking at doing more studies on wild hay in the Berlin River. And. And then they monitor the oxygen, they monitor the temperature, they monitor everything. One of the big pushes in the Tuatna is. The way they, they advertised this to get more people kind of involved in the watershed was. Trying to bring back the art of crailing in the Tuatna, Tuatna River, which I call Tuatna Creek, but. So that was, that was discussed a bit and, and why, whatever happened to the, to the grailing out of there and stuff like that, but. So went through the finances, everything's going good, they got a three hundred and twenty thousand dollar grant from Alberta Environment this year. Which was, which is huge to help with, with. Help with paying the employees and, and, and getting, getting these studies going and it's a, and it's a great thing to do. They're always looking for money, they're always looking for grants, they went in for a million dollar grant, they didn't get it, but they're going to try it again and, and stuff like that, so. So. And then there was a guest speaker from the RMWB flood mitigation. Elliot White, he's a civil engineer up there with, with RMWB and, and they were. They were discussing the flood mitigation that they're going to be doing down where the Athabasca and the Clearwater and the Sanai River all meet. Huge, like, like huge money going into this flood mitigation instead of moving people out, they're trying to protect. The Alberta government said that they, they had to build to the elevation of. Two hundred and fifty meters and. And the RMWB went with two hundred and fifty point nine. For their, for their top of Berms and that, so, and they had some already built.
Clarity millimeters or meters?
No, elevation in meters above, above sea level.
Above sea level.
Yeah, so, so. They had some roads in that, on the Berms that they had already built, they, they, they had some roads put in there and. That are at two forty eight, so they had to tear them all apart, bring them up and they're, they're still doing that, there's, there's huge. Like talking three, four hundred million dollars to be spent in there just to protect, maybe even more, yeah. So it's, it's, it was a great. Presentation by, by them and then. And that went through there, there was a couple of. Directors that changed a bit and the treasurer has changed, Paul Evans, she worked there for many years, fifteen years. And she has shuttered down now and, and she's going to stay. In tune with the board, but she's moving on to bigger and better things, so. But, and. Yeah, and there was a couple of other, actually some indigenous board members that are coming on. Forget me, but forgive me, I guess is their names. I never remember them, but, but it's moving on, it's, it's moving on to be a, to be a great. Watershed Council and, and, and then we went on to the Board of Directors, which, meeting, which was really quick because. It was Saturday and everybody wanted to get home to watch hockey, so it was pretty fast, so, but. Our next meeting is going to be September eighteenth and nineteenth and it'd be a joint meeting. In Hinton with Alms. And there's going to be two days there, two days celebration and it will also have a celebration of. The fifteen year anniversary of the Athabasca Watershed Council, so. So yeah, that's on the eighteenth and nineteenth and, and yeah, other than that, it was, it was a good meeting.
Thank you, any questions regarding Councilor Minz's presentation? Seeing none, Councilor Chamsak, you had family and community support services on the list.
We had our meeting yesterday, Nadine from FRN, Family Resource Network came in. There's three main granting streams, child development and wellbeing, social connections. And support care and caregiver capacity building, programs run from zero to eighteen years of age, it started in twenty twenty focusing on children. And supporting parents and caregivers. Ten RFN hubs in Alberta, a hundred and twenty six qualified agencies in rural and urban Alberta. Some of the partnerships include Social Impact Lab, Aspen View Interagency. Town Village County Native Friendship Center and the MD of Opportunity. And also as we know, FCS team is always busy, Debbie has reported to all three councils and revised the survey. Report and it is now online, Meals on Wheels is still looking for volunteers, it's about an hour a day. Monday to Friday for July and August, contact to Neil if anybody is interested. The senior symposium was well attended in Boyle and Athabasca. I attended the Boyle Symposium, Deputy Reeve Anderson also gave her address there. And I thought it was wonderful, June twenty first is National Indigenous Peoples' Day at the Athabasca Riverfront. Celebrating with the Athabasca Native Friendship Center from four to seven, all kinds of activity, powwow dancers, juke. Down performers and performer Lena Daniels. And one last note, FCSS has a tentative date of August twenty seventh to hold a community barbecue for the community, eleven to two P M, thank you.
Thank you, any questions for Councilor Chams? Just want to highlight the Meals on Wheels comment that comes up once in a while at Greater North and that's certainly a really worthy. Organization and, and needs community support, so hopefully there's a way to get the message out and let people know that it needs help. Is it, it would be appropriate to receive a motion to, or to accept a motion to receive the reports for information, Councilor Minz? I'm going to go to Councilor Gerlach this time because he beat you to the punch, showed it in the corner of my eye. Councilor Gerlach has made a motion to receive the reports for information, is there any discussion? Seeing none on the question of the adoption of that motion, all those in favor? Opposed, nine and zero, and the motion is adopted, you're just on a roll today, Councilor Gerlach, like there's more motions in the last three meetings. It would be appropriate to accept a motion to enter closed session, Councilor Chamsak has so moved. On the question of the adoption of the motion going to closed session, all those in favor? And opposed, the count is nine and zero, let's break for sixty seconds while. Regarding the motion to leave closed session, all those in favor? Opposed, the count is eight and zero and the motion is adopted. Leah, I've got a bunch of notes for you on timings of comings and goings. Okay, first item is Councilor Capitonic has moved to accept the report under thirteen point one for information. Is there any further discussion? Is there any further discussion? Seeing none on the adoption of that motion, all those in favor? The count opposed, the count is eight and zero and the motion is adopted. Regarding thirteen point two councillor Wallack has moved to adopt policy forty six eighty as presented and with the amendment. To include the sentence, the regular and temporary employee may carry over into the next calendar year. Any unused amount, the maximum carryover in any one year cannot exceed one year's allowance. And that's forty six eighty. Any discussion on that? Seeing none, if you're ready for the question, the question is on the adoption of that motion. All those in favor? Opposed, the count is eight and zero and the motion is adopted. Under that same item councillor Holland has told me she was going to move policy forty six eighty five, the flexible workplace policy. As presented, is there any discussion on that motion? On the question, the adoption of the motion of policy forty six eighty five, flexible workplace policy, all is in favor? Opposed, the count is eight and zero and the motion is adopted. Councillor Gerlick, you had indicated you'd like to move the, we accept the report under thirteen point three for information. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none on the question of the adoption of that motion, all those in favor? Opposed, the count is eight and zero and the motion is adopted. Thirteen point four councillor Chamsik, you would like to move to receive the report on library boards for information? Yes. On the question of the adoption of that motion, all those in favor? Opposed, the count is eight and zero and the motion is adopted. And thirteen point five to councillor Anderson has made a motion to accept the report for information. All is in favor? Opposed, the count is eight and zero and that motion is adopted. There is no further business on the agenda. Therefore, I declare the meeting adjourned at thirty five minutes after one.